He is getting us going.
There he is.
All right, Mr. Braun, Mr. Combs, Ms. Nelson.
Present.
Ms. Rickle, Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Washington.
Present.
And Mr. West.
Here.
Six council members present and two absent.
All right, this time Pastor Williamson is here to do our invocation. Thank you, sir.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, I could not help but notice as I drove over here from my part of the city, this is a busy time. Ballparks are full. The new rec center is open, a lot of vehicles there. Schools are out and families are beginning to take, at least in, in a limited way, some vacation times. The infrastructure is headed west on 10th Street. And this leads me to a part of this prayer that I think we all need to pray and be aware of. It's up to us as the community to see that our workers and that our children, that our families are safe during the summer activity months. So I pray, Lord, that we'll be vigilant, keep the phones in their proper place when we're under the wheel, slow down five miles an hour in town. And that will do a lot to allow our community to prosper, stay safe, and grow together. That is my prayer, Lord, and it's the responsibility of every one of us who live here to accomplish. I'm grateful, Lord, for those who lead this city, those who protect it, keep us safe, answer our calls when we have sure and certain needs. I'm grateful for all of our public safety officers, for those, Lord, who pick up our trash and work on our streets and sidewalks and parks and keep our utilities flowing and available. And then, Lord, for our mayor and council persons, those that serve on standing committees in this community. All the folks, Lord, who serve this city at every level. We're grateful for them and we pray your blessings on them, especially as we approach the hotter part of temperatures in the part of summer. Thank you, Lord, for our community and those that serve it and those who keep us safe. I thank you, Lord, for this session tonight. I pray, Lord, that any discussions that are held, any decisions that are made, that they first be pleasing to you. And I'm grateful, Lord, always, for those that come from the community to participate. My final petition is for those who are connected to the city family, who in any way need your touch, master, on a daily basis. Whatever their needs would be, Lord, we commend your spirit to care for our city family, their afflictions and their burdens, and just lift them according to your divine purpose. Bless this session tonight and all those that have gathered. We pray it together through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. Attention, salute, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Privilege, sir.
Thank you. All righty, at this time we have comments from visitors. If anyone wishes to speak to the council, just step to the mic and give us your name and address and keep your comments to five minutes or less, please. And seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We do not have items for consent tonight, so we'll move right on. Unfinished business, we're gonna hear an update for the recplex for Clay. How's it going?
It's going good, going good. We're starting to settle in over there, so, you know, we're kind of getting a routine, daily schedule. The part-time staff's really settling in and learning and getting comfortable with the policies and procedures. So that's going well. We got a couple fitness classes going on right now. We got a yoga class planned for a couple weeks, gonna start pretty soon. To date, we sold sixty-one memberships for a total of one hundred and forty-five individual members. So I think that's doing pretty good. That's, that's in the last seven or eight days. And like I said, we're, we're excited to be open and I think now that the pool's open and baseball and softball's going, we're gonna have a lot of time to settle in and start figuring out what programs we're gonna start offering. Any questions?
How's the technology out there? I know the wifi is not good.
We were discovering and dealing with new things every day. Like, for example, we had a couple fields rained out this afternoon. At four thirty, we discovered our, our phone cancellation hotline wasn't working correctly. So just, just little things we're working through. And hopefully we'll have that corrected in the morning and we'll move. Wifi, we're still dealing with that a little bit. Our IT folks, one of our IT folks is on vacation this week, so. But I think, I think for the most part, we're, we're doing pretty good.
I know I've been in there a little bit in the wifi, you know, really, you're not gonna get a lot of good service in the building. Just, that's the way it's probably gonna be.
Yeah, it's, you know, users are gonna have to depend on wifi calling. So we wanna make sure we have good wifi at least to, to make sure people can pick up phone calls and things like that.
Right.
The elevator?
The elevator is scheduled to be inspected tomorrow morning at eight o'clock. So hopefully everything will go well and, and maybe tomorrow it'll be operational.
Okay, thank you.
I got my membership. I was out early in the morning working out, not this morning, but, but yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday morning, the mayor sent me a text about six AM to prove he was out there walking.
He sent me one too, and I'm like, don't do that again. I don't really care if you're over there or not, not at six o'clock. You can tell me at ten when I see it.
I love it. It was worth it. All right, thank you, Clay. Moving on with new business now, Susan Crum is gonna present some stuff on Callaway Two Hundred. It is happening.
It's still happening, yes. Blaine Pestle and I are here to update you on the remaining event on our celebration schedule, postponed for over a year due to COVID. Blaine is chairing the bicentennial bash event committee. The bash is going to be held on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. Our featured performer is Shannon Dowa, that's who it's always been. Oh, he did? Good. We're going to hold it on the grounds of Callaway Electric Cooperative, and I'll give you a little bit of insight into, to where we'll be out there. The grounds are going to open at four PM that day. At six PM, Nashville performer Dave Wilbert will take the stage, and Shannon Dowa will be on at seven o'clock for a maximum of two hours. We will have local food vendors and a beer truck on site if the council approves the sale of, the sale and consumption of alcohol on a closed city street, which brings us to the city street. We would like to request closure of a portion of Center Drive, which runs behind the Callaway Electric Building. The stage and all vendors will be set up in that street, leaving a lane for emergency vehicles. The crowd will be on the six acre lawn between the building and the stage. Parking will be in a large field west of Center Drive, in other words, behind the stage, with handicap parking in the Callaway Electric paved parking lot up near the building. We are also requesting the use, and I don't know that the council has to approve this, but it's on our list of, of things to work with the city on. We're going to need several large trash receptacles for an event like this. We're going to need some rolling carts and some cones to, we found a couple of things that we need to barricade from, from the crowd, storm drain, that kind of thing, and some of the barricades that, that are often used to close city streets. We will make, need to provide security, of course, from opening until the crowd has left. And we want to explore those options with Chief Myers. We have several parking attendants lined up, but we will need expert traffic control at two intersections just south of the event, especially the one leading on to Route H. That's our event in a nutshell. We are grateful for the financial support that the city has provided for the festivities from the very beginning. We were first here in twenty nineteen when we were just getting started. We're pleased that the Callaway Two Hundred banners are still flying in downtown Fulton, and they look good. And we thank you for those. It was city council that provided those. We thank the city officials who have worked with us throughout the course of, of our, our tenure and who have volunteered your assistance in so many ways. And we welcome meetings as needed between now and August twenty-eighth to clarify any, anything that we need to for any departments in the city. Do you have anything to add?
No, I think you did a great job. You covered all the things, yeah. And the first part of that day, we didn't talk about the first part of that day, but that'll be like Family Farm, Family Farm Day at Wise Rose. So that's kind of a separate event, so, but we're really trying to focus on what we need from you all for the Shannon Dowa part of the day, but it'll be a full day. It should be great.
Well, I, for one, was really concerned about having that down here downtown, so the location's much better. Thank you.
Yeah, the, like, the co-op has been so, so good to work with, too. And so it's super, super helpful. I feel like it, it definitely, I remember when you messaged me that day. It's like, are you sure about this? So I definitely feel like it's gonna suit our needs way better.
Good.
And just be able to accommodate people, especially just, I know, you know, vaccines and stuff are rolling out, but with the space it's provided, it's gonna be able to accommodate people in a much more socially distanced manner. And just, I think it'll be a better than overall.
I agree.
And it won't tie up the downtown area for two full days for merchants who have already lost lots of time.
Well, Shannon Dowa is very popular. I was imagining five thousand people in that little square of downtown Fulton.
I just have a common sense question. Callaway Electric's on board with all this, right?
Yeah, Clint, we've been working with Clint, and he's been super, super great. So, yep, we, yeah, we're, we are running it together.
Very good, thank you.
I very much enjoyed being the city council's member to the Callaway Two Hundred, and it's amazing the people that are on that committee, that are still on that committee and still dedicating themselves to that. And then Shannon Dowa's, they just released a new album. So it, it's not, you know, for folks who remember Shannon Dowa from, you know, the late eighties and mostly in the nineties, they've released a brand-new album that's, that's charting, so it...
It'll be good.
It'll be very good.
You said you're gonna open the gates at four?
Yes.
And the first act goes on at six?
Yes.
Is two hours enough time to get five thousand people's cars in and parked and...
Well, we thought so.
Steve, what do you think?
Plus food, 'cause I'm sure everybody wants to get food.
Right, so our thought was two hours to accommodate for parking, people, and not, obviously, five thousand people aren't gonna come at one time. But our thought, you know, if we opened the gates early, it would allow for people who wanna get there early to get there, get their spot, get the food.
If Shannon Dowa's gonna perform at six?
At seven.
At seven, there's gonna be five thousand people show up at four.
I'm so glad you guys think that. That's great.
There's gonna be, there's gonna be a line, I think.
Whenever you all want to tell me to open the gates.
I think there's a line gonna be there.
What, everybody, what?
A line.
That, that's my, that's my, I'm on board with everything you said, except, I don't know, two, two hours sounds pretty, pretty short.
How many food, how many food trucks are you guys gonna have? Are you gonna have food trucks or...?
Yes, we're gonna have, I think, seven per the list in my mind.
So are they gonna be behind, are they gonna be in the parking lot, where are they gonna be?
They are gonna be on the same street as the stage, so it's gonna be like four food trucks, three food trucks, and kind of spread clear down that whole...
In their beer garden as well?
So then we'll have, they're grabbing the two beer trailers, not the whole beer truck. So we're gonna separate those trailers out to where we're gonna have one on one side and one on the other.
So you're gonna let, like, city organizations, different community organizations have food stands or something? Or is this just gonna be commercial vendors?
So it's just gonna be our local food trucks, like Gator Wagon, Kona Ice, the Big Cheese, the Firefighters. There's a couple other ones, but it's like food trucks, not necessarily like... Oh, tacos and tequila is coming. So, yeah, I don't, what do you, was that answered that question?
Well, I was saying, like, the Kiwanis and the different people that do the street fair might wanna do something. People might be more interested in that food than some of the other ones you said, but whatever, that's just my thought.
Is there a particular reason you don't open up before?
No, that's just what we have a agenda. We don't open up sooner or later.
All the concerts I've been to, you can see four hours can get the people. So I would think the first act at six, two would be too early.
People could come straight from the farm day to the concert.
And start blasting some music over the PAs out of their speakers earlier.
Right.
Give a chance for people to go to the food trucks and get food and then find a place to sit.
We'll deal in the two-lane road there, both all the way, so. And then park in the field at the one point.
Yeah, it's not gonna rain.
It's not gonna rain.
That's on the schedule.
We have, we have talked with White Moving and Storage or Cross Age, which that's not ideal, and with Callaway Christian Church. And we have permission to use their parking lots if the field is too big.
And we're talking bustling.
Yes.
Fussling company eating.
Yep.
Turn money in.
That the food vendors have to have the county for permission, clearance for feeding, some kind of permit.
With the permits?
Yeah.
Everyone that she's listed so far is licensed, they have a business license, which means they had to go through a food inspection process.
Since the county took it over, I was just wondering if they...
No, what we'll do, maybe you and I can touch base beforehand and we can just verify everybody's good. And then what we typically do is we notify the health department, and sometimes they'll send somebody out that day just to do a walkthrough, make sure that there are hand washing stations and whatnot.
Yeah, which we do. If you didn't order, like, the first one, the hand washing stations and all that stuff.
And that was really why the committee went with established food trucks, established food vendors, rather than Kiwanis and Central Christian Church and, and that sort of thing.
And most of those people are at street fair as well.
Yes.
Yeah, we just didn't wanna like double tap them two apart, you know? And we're tapping into some of the street fair volunteers and stuff for like the beer or and stuff like that, so.
I was gonna ask how many volunteers you've had, and is, is the area gonna be barricaded? Is there just gonna be like a certain area where people can drink? Are they gonna be able to drink in the field where everybody sits, or how is that gonna work?
Drinking area is not gonna be barricaded, so they're gonna be able to go get their beer and then go back to their lawn space that they're choosing.
That's much better than corralling people into a very crowded place.
Yes.
They can move around and...
Yeah, well, just, yeah, well, just like we use this space, like, it's huge. It's like six acres, right? So, yeah, so I feel like, and I totally see, like, I feel like, you know, people might think it's a little crowded, but like my plan, our plan is to really like spread them down that whole, what's that street called? The Center Street?
Center Street.
Center Street, that whole block there.
I make a motion that we accept the plan for the bicentennial bash as discussed by the committee and all the coordination that they've already made with the city departments.
Second.
I have a motion in a second.
The discussion.
Yes, sir.
Does that include the liquor?
Yes.
What includes that?
Okay.
It includes liquor.
That's what my thought to...
As well as adjusting the time to two o'clock.
Yeah, that's the kind of detail I can deal, they can do, do what they want. But are you gonna have enough police officers? We're gonna have to tap into the county at all, or...
No, we'll have, we'll have extra officers there. I'm sure county will assist us, probably coming off the interstate control, probably.
Yeah, that's my biggest concern, is people getting in and out of there, honestly. There's not a lot of roads.
We have some volunteers lined up for parking, but our big thing is like, I need, I want like a police officer there, like flashing lights so people pay attention, and they'll listen to you.
Steve Smarts.
Are tacos and tequila bringing liquor?
Um, I do not know what their menu is gonna be. I know for like the microbrews, they did like a margarita thing. I know like for our beer trailer, we're doing the beer and then like the Rita things and then the seltzers. So I haven't talked to them about their menu. I don't, they might bring like a margarita thing, is that okay or...?
So this authorization, assuming that it passes,
Yeah.
allows for liquor to be sold and consumed on the city streets and then on that premise.
That's kind of, yeah.
Now, what, what's important to keep in mind is I'm assuming you guys, your organization, you're the ones selling the beer out of the trailers, or you have someone, regardless, that doesn't really matter. If another organization wants to bring their alcohol, they're covered under that umbrella, but they do have to get a catering permit, which is through the state. And so what will happen is if you find out one of your vendors is gonna do alcohol, please direct them my way. I'll have to give them a letter. It'll be a whole process, but I can definitely help you with that.
Okay, I got with Louise, and he didn't know, he, we're on his calendar, but obviously he doesn't know what he's gonna make then.
Sure.
I'll make sure that we'll try to touch base on that.
Sure.
But he would be the only one, I think, that would do liquor if he did.
Okay.
And Chief Myers, you have no issues really with any of this claim? Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no?
No.
No down here, Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Okay. All righty, let's have a bash. Thank you all very much.
Thanks for your support. We appreciate it.
All right, next up, we're gonna have a discussion regarding the zoning and subdivision regulation update. I believe Dennis is here to, or gonna give us a little bit more insight on that.
So Mr. Johnson and I, we spoke with Jennifer Bowden with Midwestern Regional Planning about two years ago?
Yes, I was gonna say, this has not been a quick process.
Yeah, about looking at our zoning, appendix A zoning. Not necessarily the map and the areas, but a lot of the narrative language that's in it, updating it. We kind of let it go to the wayside with COVID and everything, and then she contacted us about a month ago and said that she had, they had received a grant for something like what we're wanting to do. It would basically be free money. There wouldn't be a match. They, they put it out for bid and contractor that they had in mind would, would do what we're wanting them to do, is basically look at our zoning language and, and update it. And then give us some ideas of what needs to be brought, you know, up to current language with other cities. And then we'd look at it and then bring it to the council.
A lot of our language is probably from the seventies.
Nothing.
And I will say that even though the consultant is gonna come up with options and different ideas on how to update ours and make ours more, more functional, more current, any changes that we make are still gonna be up to us and up to you. You're gonna have to approve the changes. It's not going to be a, we hire this person and all of a sudden we have a new appendix A. It's gonna be, we hire this person, they make proposals, Dennis and me and maybe somebody else have been, you know, it might involve some of the other department heads, come up with a preferred option. And, and all of that will be presented to the city council for adoption.
So you're essentially talking, maybe modifying the definitions of the different zones? Or are we including reviewing what is Zone C three and what's Zone C two?
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't get into rezoning, any of that, the areas that are zoned. A perfect example would be the accessory buildings. Looking at what's, you know, what other towns have done to update theirs. Which, looking at other towns over the accessory buildings, a lot of them have the same language that we still have, but they've updated it. So it would be looking at issues like that.
Okay.
It's gonna make it easier for us to administer and easier for the public to understand.
That's good.
So there's general information in this attachment A says contract amount has been set at thirty thousand seven ninety. But that's covered by a grant now?
Yeah.
A hundred percent.
Wow. I'm always in for free money.
That's for a good cause. This is very convoluted and confusing the way it's written, and, and it definitely could use some cleaning up. And I think it's wise to, to ask for help on this.
Well, 'cause we, we hit, hit them up a couple years ago and went through this and kind, and it's, it's, it's not gonna be an easy or quick process. And the planning commission kind of agreed that, yeah, they could do that. I'm kind of halfway convinced they went out and found some money to hire somebody so that they wouldn't have to do it. They could hire this consultant to get it done, and they still are providing the service in a roundabout way. If you guys are interested in this, like, you're like a motion allowing us to...
I make a motion, we pursue this process.
Second.
Motion in a second, is that putting it out?
Yeah.
You have a motion? Okay.
Be good of Ms., Ms. Clerk, Madam Clerk.
Do, uh...
I got you.
We changed the accessory building and brought it back to you for a second reading tonight. Do we want to let that die and, and hold off until we talk with them?
It's up to you guys.
Well, what do you think?
I mean, it's not something pressing we have to change right now. It was just, we had a PNZ, a PNZ hearing, so I brought it to them to let them look at, you know, we were thinking about changing it or wanting to change the language. But I think it would be good to wait.
And here's my version. Dennis has since, while he was doing some of this investigation, found some verbiage very recently that I think he likes better. And so even what's the council's gonna be looking at tonight, there's room for improvement in his opinion.
So that's reasonable.
So we voted down our table?
I voted down.
That's what I was thinking, yeah. Okay.
Thanks for remembering that.
What impact will that have on the property owners?
No one is currently in the, in the mix about accessory buildings.
Yeah.
I thought that was part of the two that we have. Is that not what we're talking about?
I was gonna say, I thought we were changing it because somebody wanted to build a...
No, we've had problems with it in the past, you know?
Right, so we do have two rezoning requests. Those are not what we're talking about right now, but Bill sixteen sixteen as amended, this, this one back here on the last page, that's the one that Dennis is referencing right now. And like he said, they just took that to the planning and zoning commission because there was a meeting, because they knew that they wanted to review it, so there's not anything pressing on that specifically.
No, I have no one interested in building a building right now. It's just, it has come up in the past where somebody's wanting to build a fifteen hundred square foot and they're only allowed twelve hundred. So they just, instead of going to the board of adjustments, they built a twelve hundred square foot.
All righty. Any other questions? So we do have the motion on the floor. I'll call for a question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And oppose, no? All right, we'll look forward to seeing more on that. Thank you, Ms. Crum. Okay, further discussion next on our fee proposals.
You wanna continue with that this evening? Work through it a little bit?
I don't know, we talked about it a lot. I don't think we're gonna come up with a definite answer.
I say we continue with one point.
But there's, like, we, he hasn't talked about building permit fees and...
We talked about that next work session, couldn't we?
I think we covered the animal shelter, the solid waste. And solid waste. And, yeah, solid waste, so I'll put okay on that for us. I'm, I'm moving if we're gonna look at something else, yeah. You wanna talk about building permit fees? Sure.
Mr. Johnson, can you describe the, the timing and the tempo that you're wanting us to, to discuss these fees?
Three months. I mean, it's totally up to you guys. I mean, it's, the whole discussion, was that your... I mean, it's, the whole discussion, was that your request?
Right.
Um, so, the, the timing is all yours, but, you know, we, I just don't see that we're gonna be able to get through them all in one night.
I think that we should wait till our next work session.
I agree with that.
I feel like that there's better discussion that's had than trying to rush through something.
And that'll give us time to re, you know, soak more of this in. I personally did not have a lot of time to really get really in the weeds on this, but it, it probably would be
Great.
worth the, the time to do that for us all.
And that'll give you time. If you do have questions, obviously let Bill know and we can, we can answer those questions for you and make any changes we need to make before we discuss it again.
Well, I think the ones we talked about, we could go ahead and start moving forward with ordinances and that sort of thing. And we, you know, like solid waste is an example.
We can...
I mean, are we, are we looking to modify fee schedules this year, or is this, are we looking, projecting of what we're gonna do for the budget year next year?
Little bit of everything here.
Little bit of everything? Okay.
Seems like what I've seen.
I...
Depends on the, on the...
I mean, solid waste is probably the most pressing. That's one reason I started on it, because, I mean, the fees go up. It was either first of June or first of July. And these won't take effect. Here we're the first meeting in June, second meeting in June, and we can do first read, first meeting in July, it'll be adopted. It'll probably take effect first meet, first, first September.
Yeah. I, I have a request. I guess, I, build me a box. If, if we're wanting to make fee schedule changes soon to any of these departments, any of these fees, then build me that box. We, we have a comprehensive list now that we can review, we can look at, but if you wanna make a, a change to the solid waste fee schedules in the month of August and we need to get it on the calendar by a certain date, then, then tell me that. Tell me, you know, we're going to bring first read of a fee schedule change to the end of June's council meeting, so we're gonna, if, you'll have chance to ask questions. And if we're gonna do animal shelter, if you're wanting to make a change in September to animal shelter fee, I know you're not...
I don't think we have that schedule.
Okay.
I don't think, I think the solid...
But if you do, if you know solid waste is this year, you know you wanna make business permits by, because they're, well, they start in September, is that what I heard?
March first.
Or March, whatever you have as a set schedule, bring that to us in a chunk.
Sure.
We wanna discuss this first. We wanna discuss it now because we're gonna start an ordinance process in a month.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'm just gonna look through it and say, yeah, kinda sounds good. We'll, we'll talk about it again next year, you know?
No, I, I agree.
If you want me to take action, then tell me what you need me to take action on and the timeframe that you need me to do it, you know? Otherwise, we're just gonna tell you, well, bring it up again in September and we'll keep going.
Yeah, and we'll lose this.
And we'll lose it.
I'd say we just continue the next work session.
The whole intent is to approve this, this year, so I think every work session should discuss a portion of this fee proposal. Now, like, the solid waste would take a special ordinance. I don't see any reason why we couldn't move ahead with that.
Right.
Does any of, do any of these others require a special ordinance?
Um, there are some that are not included in here that I know Mr. Johnson wants to talk about, like utility rates. Those are gonna require their own separate ordinances.
Right.
I would need to look and see specifically in each department's chapter if they have them itemized out in their code, because there will be certain instances where we're gonna run into that. I think, um, Mr. Stone, that I agree, it probably needs to be by whatever's most pressing. That's gonna help give us a little bit more of a priority list. I, again, I think maybe the work sessions is, is a good idea because it gives you guys time to review it, it gives us time to kind of brainstorm and see what changes we need to make, and then we can, we can go from there.
I guess just, just add a tagline. We'd like to start voting on this fee by July. We'd like to start voting on this fee by September. Give us kind of some, an understanding of the urgency. You know, and some of these, we're not changing, you know, we're not changing animal control, so, you know, if there's, if there's two or three more of those in that packet that we're not even changing, then let's go ahead and, and bless them and go on.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's... It should be simple. We can manage that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to make a couple of comments since we're kind of in there. The, the building permits, I don't, I have a little concern with us raising them too, too much too quickly. I don't want to, I want to encourage people to build homes and businesses and all that, and with lumber prices what they are right now, I, I hear, it's, you know, it's gonna be its own detriment, so, you know, that's probably one we should talk about the next, next meeting, and that's just my general thought. And then, and as far as like the legends, I think that we just talked about a couple of months ago, and some of those fees, um, my only concern there would be, are we competitive with other entities similar, and, you know, what discounts do we offer? I mean, I saw one for seniors, so I meet that one, and, uh, you know?
And I think we kind of, like you said, we just went through all this, sort of, and that's probably something we'll visit next spring or something when we get a little, like, a year under our belt and...
I think the golf fees are there, so they probably need to be talked about.
We can talk about that, yeah, definitely. Just for next year.
Okay.
Can we get a list of everything that we would like to firmly address this year? You know, if we know, can we get like a list of separated things where, you know, 'cause, you know, utilities wasn't on here and, right? Right, so, the difference with utilities is we have a public utility board, so those rate suggestions have to come from the utility board. They make a recommendation, and then those come as separate ordinances to you guys. We also, um, we like to give a little bit of time so that people are aware before those rates go up, so they are a little different than just your standard fees. Think of these more as, how much am I gonna pay for a business license, or how much is it to adopt a cat? It's more of a fee versus a utility rate. Okay. Does that make sense? Yes, it does. Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll kinda revisit this, maybe at our, our next work session, which will be when?
The first meeting in July.
First meeting in July, okay.
Is that spreading it out too far, Bill?
A little about the...
Well, we're gonna go ahead, we're gonna go ahead and do the solid waste.
Yeah.
Do that on our next, uh, gen, our next meeting, and then our next work session, kind of dig back into the whole proposal.
And can we, can we like dedicate a specific something, like if we know that the golf course fees are something that we need to address next, can we focus solely on that instead of just like, meow?
See how far we get?
Right.
Yeah, we, we could do that, I think so.
But the packet is great.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
You know, we, we've kind of been asking how we could get to this point, and getting here, getting to this packet of, okay, we teased it out of all these places and having it in one spot, this is, this is wonderful work.
Absolutely. Alrighty. So, we, we did make a little headway there tonight, and we'll keep working on it.
Mr. Mayor, just a minute.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to, uh, look at solid waste on the next meeting? Is that correct to, to have?
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank you. Make sure I had that understood.
Yep. So, alright, moving on. We are at council concerns. I'll start to my right, Councilwoman Nelson.
Um, no concerns at this time.
Alright, Councilman Washington?
None at this time.
And Councilman Combs?
Nothing at all.
Councilman slash CEO Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing this evening.
And Councilman Dennis?
No items.
Councilman Wade?
No items tonight.
Awesome. Woo!
That is a first, I think.
For me or for the whole council?
We'll fix that next time.
Yeah, we'll fix that next time.
Can I ask a question? How, how, do we have anything on the fixing the golf cart paths? Like mends, any mending?
We have, we haven't, we've, we've had some discussions internally, but we really haven't made any decisions. We might ask Kyle to get a load of cold nicks and go out there and throw some cold nicks.
Well, all of us will be out there on Friday, so we can really assess the situation.
Well, we could, uh, help pack the, the cold patch down, yeah.
Have a load out there on Friday, we'll...
And the golf carts are gonna be coming in September now, is that what I heard? Someone said that. The golf carts are, golf carts, they're still being made, I guess? Waiting on parks and like everything else in the country? Yeah, well, we'll...
Take them when I get them.
Yep. They'll be newer longer. Cool, alright. We'll move on to resolutions. Councilman Combs, if you would present resolution thirty four ten.
Alright, yeah. Resolution number thirty four ten, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to make application and sign all necessary documents in relation to the Patrick Lay Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant through the United States Department of Justice and establishing an effective date. And I make a motion to adopt resolution number thirty four ten at this council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
And it's a three thousand dollar grant and would be matched with three thousand dollars local. I think last time when we were out there at, at the police station for the tour, I'm guessing this is gonna buy about six. Bring it, Steve. Yeah, it's gonna go buy about six. So, we, we generally try, try to buy some every year.
Question.
Yes.
It says here, six, level two, male cut. Does that mean all the female cuts are still good? And we don't need to replace them?
Steve? Do any of your females need vests? Do any of your females need vests? This is for, this is for male vests. Do your, any of your females need a new vest?
You're, you're buying these six new vests? All of them are male cut. Do the females need them? Or they're still, they're brand new, or?
They all have vests, I think, no.
Okay, so these, you're not replacing old vests, or are you replacing new vests?
Yeah.
But the females are still new and good?
Yeah, most of my female officers, uh, there may be one or two that need them, but they're, they're the same price as the other ones, so...
Okay. I, that's fine, I just...
But they all have vests now.
Okay.
And we try to replace them. I think they're good. We're supposed to replace them every five years.
Okay.
We don't get that done, but we try to.
Yeah, gotcha.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so the grant is for three thousand and our, the price is almost six, so it'll be three thousand out of our pocket too. Alright.
And that's, that's usual with this, this grant program.
Oh, yeah, I see it now.
It's a fifty fifty split.
I see it now, I'm sorry.
And this is just to approve the application. It doesn't necessarily mean we're definitely gonna get it, it's just...
No, we're gonna get them.
We're gonna, it's...
We get them every year.
Every year. It's, it's an excellent program from Department of Justice.
Yeah, we have for the last twenty years, probably, so I don't think they'll turn us down.
This is different than the MIRMA grant that we...
Yeah, yeah, totally different. MIRMA, MIRMA doesn't, uh, in fact, there are, are no other grants that provide vests because of this grant.
Yep.
Gotcha. I just don't recall it coming up before, but, uh, but, yeah.
Okay.
So, what?
So, I, yeah, go ahead.
You say yours, you, we don't necessarily meet, we're supposed to replace them every five years, but we really don't meet that, what would that take to be able to replace them every five years?
More money.
Okay, how much more? I mean, I don't know how many officers we have.
I don't know. I don't know where the vests are at at this point, but, um, we have, um, we just started getting these new type vests, and I think there's only, uh, oh, I don't remember, probably five or six people that don't have the new vest, but they may still, their vests may be newer than five years. I don't know that.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And oppose, no? Alright, thank you. And next up, if you would, Councilman Stone, present resolution thirty four eleven?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution thirty four eleven, a resolution authorizing the city of Fulton, Missouri to execute a loan agreement with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources Division of Energy for the purpose of financing certain wholesale electricity and/or natural gas costs incurred due to extraordinary prices between February tenth and February twentieth, twenty twenty one. I move that we pass resolution thirty four eleven at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Um, do you wanna fill us in real quick on that?
This is obviously a statement that we got the, we got the money. This is the next step, but we, we have, we have met all conditions. We are, I'm gonna guess, first in line. Courtney, Courtney emailed it out like at four o'clock in the morning or something, and the day was...
Time management.
So, I, I can't imagine anybody was the for us. Um, and remarkably, like, the same day or the next day, they emailed us back and asked for some additional information, some additional clarifications. I mean, they were, maybe they didn't have any others ones to review. It's like, okay, let's do Fulton first and see what we need, what we gotta have, and make sure all our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, um, but this is the next form. We get this done, we get a letter from Riley that says everything's fine, uh, we submit it, and then we will proceed in establishing getting the money. Don't, please don't ask me any questions on that. When? I'm not gonna be able to tell you.
But all the, all of these stuff is in place?
Everything's in place. After you approve this resolution this evening.
The repayment schedule, real quick. It says one, one twenty-two. I'm just worried about the timing of being the first of the year, so we'll pay it late December. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Alright, we'll move on to ordinances. Our first one is bill number sixteen eighteen. If you would, Mr. Simmons?
Yes, sir. Bill number sixteen eighteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to declare a tract of land located at two oh nine West Ninth Street in Fulton, Missouri to be surplus property, authorizing its distribution and establishing an effective date. I make a motion, we advance bill number sixteen eighteen to second reading and next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Um, Dennis, you wanna come up and talk about some of these other properties you've done? We've got some new council people that haven't been through this process and might have some questions as to what other, what other properties we've done and how it works.
Yeah, we had a similar property on, uh, two oh six Ravine Street. Uh, the property owners, uh, just wanted to walk away from it. They needed it to the city. Um, we put that property out for bid, uh, with, uh, requirements, uh, the bidder get, uh, build a, a house back on the property. Another property on Ninth Street, we, uh, same, same thing, but we tore the house down. It's on the corner up there by Harbor School. It's an empty lot now. This property had a lot of, uh, deed issues with it, um, so the, uh, the property owner, they didn't wanna mess with it, so they contacted us and, uh, we, uh, contacted, uh, Riley and, uh, had them take care of the deed work, and now we own the property, so...
Do you know, Dennis, are we gonna try and move the property as is, or are we gonna clean this one up first?
I think we're gonna clean it up first. Yeah, 'cause there's two other, two other adjacent properties that are signed up in the, uh, grant program, so we could be taking all, you know, hopefully take all three properties down. They're three empty lots there.
It'll have a dramatic, especially once we get the grant, we get that done. It's gonna have just a dramatic impact on that, on that entire block.
This is at Ninth and Walnut. Yeah, it's...
Dennis, it's...
You almost can't see the house.
And it's also, uh, connected to, adjacent to the property of the Carver School?
This one is. This one's farther east.
Farther east, okay.
This is, this is, uh, right on the corner. There's, there's a house on Ninth, or Ninth and Jefferson, and this was Ninth and Walnut.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I guess East Walnut.
Okay.
Second, second one.
This is what is...
Second one from the corner.
Yeah, if you go up Jefferson, take a left on Ninth, it's the second one on the right.
But, but now the first house in the corner, it's, it's signed up for the grant. And the third one? the third one?
The two, all three on those.
All three of them. It's gonna, like I said, it's, once we can get these done, get them gone, it, that whole area is just gonna be, and then, and I, I don't know if I've told all of you this, but kind of the neat thing, and I'm going with the grant. You know, not only are, with the grant, will we be removing 44 ISOs from the community, we're going to be creating 44 vacant lots in town for someone to rebuild, to put a, to put a new home on, in some of these neighborhoods, and that would be just a tremendous improvement.
Right.
We're creating building opportunities. And the, and the property owner's not gonna have a whole lot of money in it, so it's not like they're gonna need 15,000 for the lot either.
So, we will clear this property, Dennis, and then we'll sell it?
Most likely sell it.
Okay.
We'll take it, Dennis?
And I, I think we're planning on doing it, the demo in-house. We did with the other house on Ninth Street, and it worked really good.
There was two on the grand and block.
Especially, especially.
The two houses on Grand or Block.
On Block, the, yeah, we did those houses the same as we did with 206. Those two lots, we didn't put stipulations just because the cost of the demo on those two houses was gonna be pretty high.
So, there's no rebuild stipulation on those two lots on Block?
No, not, no, we didn't tie anything to that.
So, they may sit vacant for longer than a year?
They're, they might, but I'm, I'm pretty sure he's gonna build back on it.
Okay.
The guy that's.
But in that instance, that guy did the demo. He did, he did the demo basically in exchange for the property.
Understand, but usually, it, this, the one-year stipulation still rides on a piece of surplus property, because that was our property that we surplus to him. I just, I have people asking me, when are houses going up? Hasn't it been almost a year? So.
As far as what stipul, I'm, I'm not aware of what stipulation.
To re, to rebuild a house within a year.
We didn't put that, we didn't attach that to those two lots.
Understand.
The same requirements.
But the assumption was that it was there. So, public assumption and my own assumption was that we would see two new homes built on those two lots within a year.
Originally.
And now we're learning that it's not, so.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just making a statement.
His, his intentions was to build a daycare there on those two lots, which that would fit in that zoning. Now, if he doesn't build, I know he's had interest, there's been interest in buying the lot from him, the individual. So, I, I'm sure.
Understand. And, I guess, let me restate. It's not that any wrong information has gone out. The, the public in the community knows about these programs. They know when the city surplus is a piece of property and that house goes down, they're assuming a new house is gonna be up in a year. And so, so, it's just the assumption that.
I don't know that that's a good assumption.
Yeah, because we make different deals for different lots, for different reasons.
And that's what I'm stating out loud, is we, we have, we have a community that is starting to get into this and is starting to see this and making the assumption that every piece of surplus property that, that the building goes down, that we're gonna see a new house go up in a year. So, I'm just, I'm just sharing.
Okay.
With the council that, that we've, we've created some expectations, which are wonderful expectations. They just might not always be true.
Sure, understood.
Very good.
I had a question. Dennis, you said on this property, this had a, I missed the word, the word, you, you, did you say weed problem? Is that what you said?
Weed problem?
You mean that?
No, it had a deed problem.
Deed problem, okay.
Yeah, with the title.
Deed weed, I didn't hear what you said, that's why I'm asking what you said, okay.
No, it was a.
Probably a lot of that, too.
It never.
There are a lot of weeds there. I would go buy it, yes.
Tom Riley took care of the weed problem.
It never went to probate, and, and there were a lot of issues.
Oh, it was a estate home type thing? Okay, understood. All right, thank you. I just didn't hear what you said.
Alrighty. Any other discussion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? Moving on to Bill number 1614. Councilman West, if you would.
Okay, Bill number 1614, ordinance number blank, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning ordinance, attractive land located at 1205 Old Jefferson City Road in Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. I move for reading of Bill number 1614 at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this bill? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Did you say you were gonna do third tonight?
Yes, sir, tonight.
Okay, go for it.
Bill number 1614, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning ordinance, attractive land located at 1205 Old Jefferson City Road in Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill number 1614 for final passage at this council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? We've all heard the bill read three times. At this time, Madam Clerk, she would take roll call for final vote.
All right, Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
And Mr. West?
Yes.
Six council members affirmative and two absent.
Bill number 1614 passes. And now, if you would, Councilman Washington, present 1615.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1615, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning ordinance, a tract of land located at 1140 Highway 54 in Fulton, Missouri, and establish an effective date. I move that we, I make a motion that we take this up at the next scheduled council meeting for a third reading and final reading.
Thank you, Jeff. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on Bill 1615?
Isn't 1615 across the street from 1614 and kinda tied together?
No.
They're not tied together. They are very close in proximity, but yes, they're both changing their rezonings at the same time.
Okay, but it's not for the same reason, or?
No, not the same property owner.
Oh, okay, never mind then.
I think I know what you're getting at. We should, should pass this one tonight, too.
Exactly, but if they're not tied together like I thought they were, then that's fine.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alrighty, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before you move to Bill 1616, I just wanted to, we mentioned in earlier conversation that we might not be actually ready for the council to pass this, this measure this evening. And just as an item for, for the new council, if we don't receive a second, then the bill automatically dies as is. We don't have to worry about voting on it or any of that, not to persuade anybody from not reading or seconding a bill that they wish to pass, but that is the quickest and easiest way for the council to just let something go. Thank you.
So, I just wanna make sure I understand this correctly. We read it, but we don't second it.
It, that's a possibility.
We read it, we make a motion, and then no one seconds it, not that I'm telling you what to do, but that would in fact be the quickest way for it to die.
Thank you.
So, in all seriousness, can I, it's just a point of order here. On the same thing, we could read this and say, we recommend rejection of this.
No, no, you don't, you never do a motion in the negative.
Okay, that's why I was gonna ask. Okay.
If, if it gets seconded, but we still don't want it to pass, then we, there has to be a majority of no votes to get us there.
Right.
It saves a couple of steps if it, if it isn't seconded.
Or it could be tabled.
Or it could be tabled.
I was gonna say, can we strike it?
Do what we were gonna do.
Let's just have you read it like we were going to, and we'll, we'll go from there.
See what happens.
We have duct tape. Alrighty, if you would, Councilwoman Nelson, Bill number 1616.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1616, as amended, an ordinance amending Appendix A, Zoning Section 4, Use Regulations, Item B1A, Other Use Regulations, Fulton City Code, by repealing certain regulations, enacting new regulations in lieu thereof, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill number 1616 for third reading at the next council meeting.
Alrighty. I do not hear a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, we do have a second, okay. Alrighty, so we have a motion and a second on the floor.
All right, any discussion on that?
So, actually, we're, we're hoping to kinda let this die.
Yeah.
If, if the council so chooses to, in order to kinda clarify it with our grant program to sort of re, research the, the whole thing and get it right. Am I missing, leaving anything out?
No.
No.
Okay. Any questions? Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, okay, one yes and opposed, no?
No.
And just for me, can you please hold up your hand if you said no? All right, thank you very much.
Alrighty, very good. We are down to announcements. I have a couple tonight. The MML Elected Officials Training will be held Thursday and Friday, June 10th and 11th for council members who are registered. And the next meeting of the C Council will be held Tuesday, June 22nd at 6:30. I do not have a need for executive session?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All right, thank you all, very much.